Good morning. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead, the City Commission, Manager Fuentes and staff, welcome to the business meeting of the City Commission of the City of Truth or Consequences. It is now Wednesday, May 23rd at 9:02. And before I ask for roll call, if you have any type of electronic device on your person, if you could please shut it down, turn it to vibrate, so we see a lot of smiles out there, but nothing that's going to be disruptive up the meeting. Madam Clark, can we have roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Here.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Here.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is silent meditation. For the next fifteen or twenty seconds, please keep the families and citizens of Santa Fe in your hearts and minds, and those who lost their life on this horrendous tragedy. Thank you very much. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Baca, could you please?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in thy name, holy and just.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda. I'll stand for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Green, I'd like to recommend that we approve the agenda with the following changes, if we may. The first change would be to move item H3. Sierra Joint Office on Aging Request to create an outdoor memory wall on the east side of the commission chambers to right after the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
And to then, under new business, go in the order of 1, 4, and 2. Would the remaining items be?
Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Heschler. I need a second for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, carriage unanimously. Thank you. H3, new business, discussion action, Sierra Joint Office on Aging Request to create an outdoor memory wall on the east side of the commission chambers. And our presenter is the Executive Director of SJOA, Carol Tavis.
Hi. So we're talking about the backside of this wall, and the top we could always remember. We'll put the names of the people that have already been a big influence on the senior center. Those would be Ken James, Patty Lester, and Jane Green, and any others that would come up. But those are the ones off the top of my head. And then allow other people to basically purchase space to maintain the wall if they would like their family members and friends. This is a suggestion by other seniors, thinking about some seniors that have influenced us that would like to be, they'd like to have memorialized on that wall. So we will purchase this scaffolding system, make sure it's safe. We have a local artist that's willing to do it for what I think is nominal, and we'll maintain the wall, make sure it stays sealed, and the name's protected.
Excellent. Any questions concerning?
Um, Mr. Tavis, I don't know that you maybe need to even borrow, buy a scaffolding. I know a couple of people that have them.
Okay.
I probably would lend them to you for...
I'll contact you on that. We just want to make sure she's not up there on a ladder, and so...
No, no, I appreciate that, because ladders and paintbrushes can sometimes be problematic. And I would like to say that I do know, did know, all three of those people that you were wanting to put on that wall, and I can't imagine a more kind gesture in their memory than to do something like this. I don't know why you picked this building and not your building, but it works.
Well, it faces our entrance, and it works on our entrance and exit from the patio and those using the patio.
Thank you. Ms. Tavis, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Good comment. Any other concerns or questions? If not, I will stand for a motion.
Mayor Green, I'd like to move that we support Sierra Joint Office on Aging's Request to create an outdoor memory wall on the east side of the commission chambers, as presented by Carol Tavis.
I have a motion by Commissioner Heschler, second by?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Baca, any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, carriage unanimously, and thank you for your thoughtfulness. We appreciate it. Okay. Next item is comments from the public. Three-minute rule applies. If you want to address the commission, please state your name, any information that you have that you'd like to be part of this meeting, please put it in the black box. Time is yours.
Diane Lombardo, Truth or Consequences. I have some questions. Mr. Fuentes, when you talk about having volunteers, do you mean hands-on or hands-off? Let's not get lost in the words here. We want hands-on. Do you know what cage crazy, depressed, stressed, low disease resistant makes animals unadoptable? Because they are not, they are actually neglected, and that makes them dead. Go to the shelter. Have any of you been to the shelter since it's open? I was there yesterday. I was appalled. I was disgusted. Did you know that they are breaking a rule, an ordinance of TRC? Okay, the ordinance is shelter. Any animal habitually kept outside, and I don't want to hear that they are not habitually because they are rotated. That is not true. I mean, they, these are, the cages are being double-used, so the animals outside are outside. Animals kept outside should be provided with a structurally sound, waterproof enclosure, large enough to accommodate the animal. This is in the ordinances, it's on Facebook, I mean, website for the city. Hello? And who's going to police the police who are running the shelter? Okay. Uh, paperwork, there was no paperwork. Every dog that, or cat that comes in there should have paperwork, and that paperwork should follow that animal to every cage. It should always, always be on that cage, always. Maybe four or five were done, the rest were not identified. And Lieutenant Baker, please do not run over there and send all those extra animals to dogs to be killed, because two wrongs don't make a right. Okay. As far as management goes, we are paying two people who have no clue what to do to run the shelter. It's costing us like $100,000. How about if we get somebody really who knows what they're doing? Learning day by day doesn't work. You should have, we've had lots of time to work with rescues, to get all this put together before the shelter even accepted one animal. We could have a volunteer who would be hands-off, but could do rescue work every day, but they don't do that, which is why we're overcrowded. So please, take yourselves over there today. Take a look at it, and maybe sit down with us and learn how to really run a shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Tittle, TRC resident and dog park volunteer, but I'm speaking in my capacity as a concerned animal lover. I'd like to lend my support to the concept that the city work with the communities, animal lovers, and animal welfare organizations, to ensure that the shelter is run according to best practices, thus reducing friction between the city and the community, the oversight burden on the police, and possibly avoiding a PR fiasco. Indeed, I am asking formally that the city commissioners convene a gathering of all stakeholders around the animal shelter to lay the ground rules for the establishment of a volunteer advisory and support group, and that this gathering be chaired by the city's dog lover-in-chief, Mayor Green. Having run a small, not-for-profit in my previous life, I know that working with volunteers is indeed work, but I also know that the benefits outweigh the negatives. I can point you to Dog Park, which is an excellent example of the city and citizens pulling together to accomplish something important. I've also done a little research that I'd like to share with, I'll give copies of this research to Clerk Kate, if I may, to have her make copies for the commissioners, Manager Fuentes, Chief Apodaca, and Lieutenant Baker. I'd like to read from the, the research was on volunteer protocol at city-run animal shelters, and one of the most outstanding protocols I came across was that for the LA Animal Services Department, they have a volunteer recruitment page because they understand that volunteers can make a difference in the lives of abandoned and orphaned animals in our care. I'm quoting them. Our dogs, cats, rabbits, and other animals are in need of care, attention, walking, playing, socializing, and engaging with people in order to find them homes to go to. Volunteers are also needed to assist with other important roles such as adoptions, kennels, greeting customers, photography, videography, playgroups, grooming, humane education, public relations, and office tasks. So this recruitment page is part of the handout. One of the important functions that they did not mention is that friends of the animal shelter could be very instrumental as a nonprofit organization to raising funds for the enhancement of humane sheltering. The second...
Thank you very much. Just put the information that you want in the black box. Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Fuentes?
Good morning, Commissioners Ron Fen, 316 North Roche. Since no one on the staff or the, none of the commissioners bothered to contact me versus the, the letter that I sent you last week, I'll read this myself. Mr. Green, thank you. I accept your report apology. That said, I totally disagree with what supposedly precipitated your frustration induced intact. Contrary to your portrayal of ADHD-like behavior, I actually pay more than enough attention to the city's business to understand what is really happening. A video review of my public comment on Wednesday, May 9th, will confirm that I made no mention whatsoever of city employees' salaries. However, that was the substance of your entire rant, indicating who really has the attention problem. When I briefly spoke on, of the April 10th workshop, I was referencing the meeting's minutes and items such as the money-wasting golf course, meeting times for the city commission that pays city employees to attend, new employee uniforms, awards, summer picnic, an election process which maintains our governmental status quo as an unnecessary new city hall, annex parking lot, and vehicles for administration, and sulfide utility meters. Very little, if any, public benefit can be gleaned from any of these topics, which expend a fair amount of the workshop time. I no longer stay for meetings past public comment because I have other things to do in the morning, rather than being forced to listen without comment or question opportunity. As for your not liking to do battle with me, let me remind you of the public debate which I organized during the 2016 campaign for City Commission that you refused to participate. When was the last time you or any commissioner researched the facts surrounding city management and staff proposals? Yet the commission all too often approves unsubstantiated and unbeneficial actions. Last meeting, harangue, was clearly your way of diverting attention from the real issues I addressed. The solar facility, city management, and unresponsive police protection by the city manager's private security force. As frequently given, my offer of information and assistance on these matters and others still stands. I'm a phone call away. If answers and information regarding my actual comments are not forthcoming by today, then it's time for you to resign, Mr. Green. You should end the pretense that you're improving the City of Truth or Consequences. It will take decades to recover from your undermining influence and wasting of our money.
Mr. Trahir?
Aldon Trahir, 506 West Third Street. Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. I stand before you today to provide my public input as a follow-up on the article by publisher Mike Thule, requesting the resignation of Mayor Steve Green from his dis body. Since my return to my hometown in 2009, Mr. Thule, or Mike as those of us who grew up here call him, rarely has spoken out on matters before the commission. He calls to attention Mayor Green's remarks, which he termed a personal attack on one of our citizens. I'm not sure why Mike chose to speak out on this particular juncture about harsh remarks by a member of this commission criticizing the citizen of the community. It certainly is not the first time a member of the commission has voiced harsh remarks against a city, citizen during a city commission meeting. Regardless of why Mike chose to call for the resignation of Mayor Green, I fully support the statement by Mike that a personal attack by a standing commissioner on a citizen of this community is a violation of the office of an elected official. We function as a republic where our citizens elect the best person to represent us. Attacks by an elected official on a citizen during a meeting should not be permitted and should somehow be sanctioned. Perhaps the procedures for the commission should be rewritten to specifically prohibit a standing commissioner from personally attacking a citizen of this community. To be fair, I believe that it's all too often that I've witnessed citizens being very rough on commissioners during a meeting. In any case, I want to suggest that we place a motto over the heads of the commission right there, so that everyone is reminded during the meetings how we support ourselves. Simply stated, it should say, "Strong on issues, soft on people." Those are my prepared remarks. I also wanted to talk briefly about the golf contract. I'm shocked that you all have extended it for another year. I've handed, handled thousands of contracts. I've never heard of a contract being extended past the end date when the contract has ended. It's not done. Now, I've gone out to the golf course, I don't play there anymore, but I've gone out there and looked at it, and I don't think any of you did, because there are no metrics in what you did for extending the contract. I told you that the golf manager only goes there two days a week. Did you require him to be there seven days a week or five days? The practice green has got a gap that big right down it, it's been like that for at least a couple of months, that doesn't seem to be repaired, or no one's working on it. Please go out there, take a look at it, ride the golf cart.
Susan Curry, Truth or Consequences. Good morning, everyone. I think you all know me. Two things. First thing is, I volunteer at the Chamber of Commerce, and there have been many people coming in who love this town. I give them all the information they have, plus more, because I like to talk, and they're very happy. They're moving here. I send out visitors' guides to people who live in New Mexico but who want to come to a smaller town. Secondly, is this thing about the shelter, we should be able to work it out. You have volunteers who want to do it, you have a police force, Sabrina, everybody should want to make this the best shelter that we have. We all have animals, and luckily mine aren't at the shelter, but all of them have been gotten from a shelter either in this town or where I came from, Florida. And everybody has volunteers, and they play with them, walk them, I don't know what the situation is, whether you can take them out of the thing. I would just open all the cages and sit in the middle of the floor. Oh, let's have a good time. But there's got to be a way to work it out. There's got to be a way where the police force, who I guess are in charge of the shelter, and Sabrina and the rest of us, they will, the people are willing to do it. You know, in this town, sometimes there's five people who do the same thing, all the time, that volunteer and do it. So I think that we can work it out. There's no reason that you guys and them shouldn't want to talk to us and see, you know, where we could improve or help your shelter out. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Sarah Frothingham. I live here in TRC. I also have to know that all of the commissioners, I don't know about you, Mr. Baca, all have rehomed animals and really care about the quality of care that our animals receive in TRC. Both of my dogs recently, I've spent a couple hundred dollars to keep them in, you know, I've got diggers. And I'm really unhappy about the treatment of the animals at the shelter. And the thing is, this is a small town. People come here because of the way the animals and the people are treated. And believe me, I think anyway, that this will go viral, because animal rights are so important in this country, and that's the one thing we seem to be able to work on and come in agreement with, are how we treat our animals. And hopefully that's going to go on to our citizens at some point. But really, we have to start mentoring everybody. And like we talked once, Juan, it has to start at the top, the mentoring, and it can come down, and we don't pay a lot for anything in this town. We don't have any money, but we can mentor, and we can help people learn how to become better citizens, and that doesn't cost anything. And we certainly have incredible people who would volunteer and help coach mentoring within the city, so that all of our citizens can, who work for the city, can also enjoy their time at the city, because that's all we've got. We don't have money, but we do have goodwill, and we want this small town to make it, and we can make it by goodwill. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor Green, Manager Fuentes, Carol Wheeler, a member of the Sierra Talleres Square Dance Club, who hosted the most successful ever square dance festival this weekend. I have some notes I would like to read, please. First of all, there is no way to prioritize the list of thank yous. Just sitting here, Joey and I have still gone over more people. The 71st Annual New Mexico Square and Round Dance Association was, according to the 150-plus dancers we had in attendance, the best and most successful festival they could remember. And these people are dancing longer than I am old, and that's a long time. Superlatives were everywhere. What a great town, the hotels, motels, RV park, everybody was so welcoming and nice to us. Can't believe the mayor came to our dance and spoke. What a great choice of restaurants, everything you could want. The hot springs are perfect after a day of dancing, just so much to do here. And the facility was so perfect, and the decorations were wonderful. Our festival was an example of success by teamwork and communication and cooperation. I will try in my rest of my minute and a half to acknowledge those people who I don't know were involved in this. The City of Truth or Consequences and staff, Peter Baca, Mayor Green, Police Chief Mike Apodaca and his officers for traffic control, the State of New Mexico for the use of State Highway 85, known to us as Date Street, I think that's the right highway, the Sierra County Detention Center personnel, and Mrs. Virginia Lee for letting us dance in the jail, Geronimo Springs Museum and the Geronimo Trail Visitor Center for the generous donations of the flyers and the brochures, Frances Luna of the Sierra County Sentinel for lending us the beautiful Western mural. They just brought you right back to the past. It was wonderful. The dancers at this fias festival were from all over New Mexico, Arizona, Texas, Colorado, California, and our couple that danced on Elephant Butte Dam from Sweden were also here again this weekend. They will be great ambassadors for this city when they arrive back at their homes. And the Sierra Talleres of TRC, thanks you all for making this event such a great success. There were many people in the background that I have no idea who they were, but Mr. Green does, and I would like to extend our thank yous to them. Thank you very much. It was a great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Joey Solis, and I live in Elephant Butte, and I would like to thank the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, city manager. We want to thank you so much for your support and effort for our square dance festival this weekend. It was a total success, as Carol mentioned. She mentioned 150-plus dancers, they stayed here at least a couple nights, some three nights, they stayed over, they enjoyed everything that was here. I heard nothing but accolades about the facility, the cooperation between you and everyone else. I know Carol was giving accolades to most people. She didn't have time to mention the Visitors Bureau. We really appreciated the effort there. And also, the largest tax. We were able to receive some funding on that, which helped promote our square dance festival. As she mentioned, it was one of the largest we've had in many, many years. We had the most dancers here for what we call trail-in, trail-out dance, and those are kind of letting people start coming in at different times. We had great participation with the evening dances, which are our main dances. We want to give thanks to a gal that sang the National Anthem. She was superb. It was, kind of brought tears to my eyes. But what Carol didn't mention, or have time to mention, was that we were able to dance in the street, and we were able to dance in the jail. Square dancers are kind of like Boy Scouts. We do things to earn merit badges. We call them fun dangles. And I do have some fun dangles here. One is for dancing in the street, one is for dancing in the jail. You can see what these dancers stuck around, an extra afternoon, and even some in the evening, and spent the next day, just so they could earn these. These are hard to earn. As you know, dancing in the street is not easy to get permission. We thank the chief of police and the officers that supported that, and the jail. I have some for each and every one of you, and I also have a program so you can get an idea of what we have. In conclusion, again, we received nothing but positive accolades about the city's friendliness in every manner. Merchants, hotels, the mayor. By the way, you might consider a stand-up comedy routine when you retire. But again, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. This is for you.
Thank you. Anyone else like switch, uh, hands? I'm sorry.
Good morning, Charlie Warren, Elephant Butte, New Mexico. This is about OHVs, a little bit of a change. Several speakers who wanted to come before you today are unfortunately in other 9:00 AM meetings, including Representative Rebecca Dow, Jared Bar Two, Elephant Butte City Council Member Edna Trager, Rex Plater, who was instrumental in forming the Elephant Buttes OHV ordinance, and Dean Tulke, President of the New Mexico... Butte's OHV ordinance, and Dean Tulke, President of the New Mexico Highway Vehicle Alliance, who is ill today. If this consideration goes forward, these individuals and others would be available to assist the City Commission in any capacity that would be requested. I'd like to thank the City Commission for their consideration to allow OHVs on the TRC city streets. If adopted, TRC would join the following New Mexico cities in harvesting its share of the money being spent on this up-and-coming sport. Almagordo, Angel Fire, Chama, Clayton, Cloudcroft, Clovis, Doniana, Elephant Butte, Farmington, Gallup, Grants, Cuesta, Red River, Roswell, and Riedoso. The money spent on this sport nationally amounted to $51.5 billion in 2017. And I will place this excerpt in the box when I'm finished. The web address on the top of the document will lead you to the full 27-page report put out by the Outdoor Industry Association in this country. We have valuable recreational opportunities here. The fact that the rubber chicken ride is so popular here in TRC is proof that our natural resources are very inviting to OHVs and motorcycle enthusiasts from New Mexico and from all of our neighboring states. These 100-plus riders spent approximately $40,000 in TRC in one weekend last October, and they're already signing up for this, for the ride this year. Cedar Cove RV Park has had several poker runs for OHVs over the last couple of years, and they are heavily attended as riders look forward to each new adventure planned by their staff. Opening TRC to OHVs would open a door to opportunities these riders can't currently access. And this would lead to similar OHV activities, bringing more revenue into our TRC. It's my opinion, having traveled and spent my money on, in OHV-friendly states, Arizona, Utah, Idaho, and Colorado, that TRC and the surrounding area would be very inviting to the enthusiasts, just like it is to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor Green, City Commissioners, and Renee, who works so hard. And I've got one little suggestion that I like to make to you. Every time I go north on Fort Street and I need to cross Main, I think my life is in danger. And the reason is that when cars are parked on the south side of Main, you cannot see the traffic that's coming. And I think there's a simple and not very expensive solution. That would be to get a traffic mirror and put it on the northeast corner of Main, on the lamppost. You can pull that up 10, 15 feet in the air where it won't be bothered, and they're metal, and you would be able to see what's coming up Main. And it wouldn't cost you much. And I think that would make a big difference to the safety of that corner. Something I'd really like to think about is every time I cross there, I think about it. You know, look at that lamppost. And I think what a perfect angle to see what's coming. Because you can't see, especially if you're in a small car, you can't see above the hood of the, of the, a truck that's parked by the raised sidewalk there. You're looking at a wrong angle. So just a suggestion for you, simple and cheap. The second thing is, I think you have a lot of people that do a lot of work in the background. And sometimes I know personalities clash. And I know that there's some people that don't get on with other people and don't get on with some of you. But I'd like you sometimes to look behind that and look at what those people do and what they're worth. And I'm thinking mainly of the golf course. Because I think you had somebody at the golf course in Howie Tucker who knew how to run a golf course, who did a good job. We had a great golf course. And personalities were the biggest reason that that went out the window. And I don't think that's something that should be in your equation. It should be what kind of job do you get for, for what does it cost you, and the effect on the community. And that applies to a lot of other things, too. I think there's other people around that are in the same boat. There are a lot of things that are done in the background here that you may not even know of that are actually beneficial for the city. And I want to get into one day about heads in beds and where this money goes to from the Lodger's Tax, because I think there's, somebody's got a couple of scythes on the couple, on the bottom of that bucket, and it's not going the right direction. But that's another day. And thank you for your thoughts.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Carla Johnson, and I reside in Elephant Butte. I would like to wish each of you a good morning and good health. I want to thank each of you for giving me this opportunity to just speak to you regarding the opening of your streets, allowing OHVs to easily access the many off-road trails that stem from this city. Financially, Sierra County isn't rich, but it is rich with history and beauty and good-hearted people. Many of the rare gems that are in our county can only be found on trails through the desert and canyons and mountains, that can only be reached by way of public roads in the county and the city. Having that access without having to trailer an OHV will let others know that we want them to come and visit us and experience Sierra County's richness as we know it, and stay in our RV parks and hotels, stock up on supplies in our stores, buy fuel here before they head out on a day's adventure. Then they can come back and soak in the hot springs, or rap the river, or go jump in the lake, and go home with treasured memories and a desire to return and explore even more. This is an opportunity for more year-round tourism that allows folks that can't hike or ride a trail bike to safely share our riches, which includes retired folks, folks with special needs, families, and anyone that loves the outdoors. In fact, if you've never done this, you need to try it. It's really awesome. Who knows? This welcoming gesture can entice more folks to move here, or open a door for business that rent, sell, or no repair OHVs. I want to thank you again for this opportunity for you to consider this, for opening your streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Howie Tucker, I live in TRC. I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. And first of all, I knew several times, several months ago, several days ago, we had a meeting with all you folks about questions and stuff like that. Do we ever get any answers to those? And second of all, I see that you hadn't reached a agreement for the golf course. The golf course has had problems for many years, and I've talked to the City Commission and the City Manager and a lot of Commissioners about the problems with the water system. And you also, this year, you're closing down your baseball field because of water system? Right? No? Right? You're not?
No.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me for that. Okay, so if you want to control your affluent water problem, you can't do it with just chemicals. You need to do it with a filter system that is recommended by the state and federal commissions on use of affluent water that touches public ground, because you have impurities, and it needs to be filtered. And I've been talking to the City of TRC since 2007, and it was my first contract, and I think there was a lot of you that were on the commission, about what it can do for the water system. Your freshwater pond was needed. When I worked there, I used the freshwater pond to help flush out the kaka that was in the affluent water system. That's how I used, corrected the, the problem I had. I think it would help your ball field also. If you have water going out there, it needs to be cleaned. You can't do it chemicals, folks. You can't do it. I know Silver City had a problem, and you suggested you talked to them, but I also talked to Silver City, and they've lost three of their ponds because of the problem with the sulfur. Okay? I think, again, I would like to have the question I asked about what's the plan for the city golf course answered to me. Complete plan. I've, I've had a plan, and I talked to Mr. Hector about, that I think would work. I wish he would have brought that out to your attention. I don't know if he did or not. But we would get the PGM program kids in Mexico State University involved. We would get people who know the golf business and know turf management. Excuse me. Terry has worked, maybe hard, maybe not. It's a tough job. But you gotta know what the hell you're doing. You gotta know what you're doing. And I stress that every damn day of my life about this golf course. I have a passion for golf, because I know what it can do for these kids, the older generation, and to get people in here. Get somebody that knows the golf business and knows turf management. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Lydah DiMarino, on behalf of Main Street Truth or Consequences. First of all, I want to announce that the shuttle, formerly called Safe Ride, will be starting this weekend, and it'll be shutting, shuttling people all summer long from Elephant Butte, Elephant Butte Lake to TRC on Fridays and Saturdays, and, and then on three-day weekends around the holidays, those Sundays as well. The full schedule and the details can be seen at sierrashuttle.org. I want to thank the City, Don Armiho, Tracy Johnson, Dave Johnson, OJ Hessler, Andy Alvarez, and all the other people who helped us with all of our logistics for the Hot Springs Festival. Some of the highlights include, we took 33 people this year to the Hot Springs Hotels, which is like a record. Lots of people. Jayden Darlin out in Monticello had a couple from Michigan staying with her. She said, they told her that their favorite part was the Hot Springs Festival, and that next year they were gonna come back, but they won't be staying with her. They'll be staying in our Hot Springs Hotels. So that was cool. And then one of the other highlights was that almost all of the hotel rooms in the Hot Springs Hotel area were occupied. And before we started this festival on this weekend, it was a really low occupancy weekend. Some of the hotels were at about 40% on this weekend. So to see them up at 100% occupancy is a good thing. I am also going to encourage you to support the Lodger's Tax Board's recommendation for the funding that they've suggested for Main Street Truth or Consequences. We have some new projects that include co-marketing with Elephant Butte on holiday events. We're looking really hard how to put heads in beds. Also, things that we're gonna be working on are downtown business directory and relocation package, and we're actually working on those over the summer. So at the end of the summer, we look to have those complete. And just another thing on that, we really are turning our attention, as far as marketing, into more of the digital platform, because, I mean, number one, it's really measurable to know how many people are looking at your stuff. And, and it's, like, price-wise, it's way less expensive than print media. So that's the way a lot of our marketing is headed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. You stand up. I think you're gonna speak.
Yes, sir.
How you guys doing? Oops. Steve Zeski, 1019 Parkway. Been down here in a while. I guess you had a real exciting meeting last time. Not that I agree with Mr. Ashbaugh much, especially since, you know, the price of his gas always gives me heartburn. But I do agree with his point about the, about the sewers and the water. You need to have a comprehensive plan, you know? Five or six weeks ago, it was in the paper, you know, the hospital construction was stopped because, you know, they ran into a pipe that was on nobody's maps. When you did the Healing Waters Plaza, there's all kinda, all kinda problems up under there with leaking pipes and stuff. Seems like every time you do something around town, you're running into stuff that needs to be fixed. I got a little article here about the Mooseheart Campus, which is the, the high school charity thing for the moose out in Illinois. And, you know, they mapped the whole system before they did anything. And they, they found out that they could mothball about a half mile of sewers and stuff, because they tore down a bunch of buildings in the 70s, and they didn't really need it anymore. So I can't underestimate the importance of getting a survey for the water and the sewer system, because you don't have to dig everything up. You know, manholes, that's one thing. But, you know, they can line sewers with rubberized material. Now they go in with cameras and the, you know, the bigger sewers and the bigger water mains, you can main, you can line all of that. But you really need to get a comprehensive plan. I know it's gonna cost some money. But, you know, about five years ago, you guys spent $38,000, $40,000 to have the Hot Springs Aquifer System assessed, just to make sure, you know, you weren't gonna run out of water and stuff. And I think you need to do the same thing here. So I just put that in there for you to read it, because I think it's, you know, you need to know where everything is and what's out there and what you're looking at. And maybe you don't have to fix everything. The other thing I got is about the, the races this weekend. You know, I know those guys outlaw racing are there to make money. Yeah, so, you know, you got 70,000 people in for the lake, you get 1% of 70,000, that's, from their point of view, that's better than getting 1% of 30,000 people on a non-holiday week, lake weekend. But when the town's full and all these guys are camping at the airport, I don't know how much money you're gonna make, you know? If, if you're gonna do it, I really think it should be on non-holiday weekends. I'm gonna reserve, you know, I'm gonna reserve judgment to see how they do, because I've been to these things before in the Midwest back in the 80s. So, you know, I'm gonna try to keep an open mind, but, you know, maybe non-holiday weekends. Thank you.
Lorena Miller, Director, Geronimo Trail Civic Byway and the Visitor Center. We were delighted to provide the bags for the square dancers. The DAR will be having something here in June, that we have already promised to provide bags for. I want you to keep in mind when you review my Lodger's Tax application, this past year, all of our city lodger's tax was allocated between the reprinting of the day trips and our website. And we get some from the county for small projects along. Well, we ran out of the Geronimo Trail brochures, and county lodger's tax didn't have enough money for them. Our city lodger's tax was allocated, so that was a little over $1,000 out of my own pocket. I am asking for more money this year simply because there is going to be an end to my pocket at some point. And I want to provide this because we need these brochures. It makes up the packets. We send them out to other places. We have visitors that come in. 80% of our visitors are first timers. The ones that have been, that are returnees, they don't come back to the Visitor Center, because they already have all of this information we've given them, so they can plan their next trips, and their next trips, and their next trips. So I want you to keep that in mind, that I, I am doing everything I can to keep fully stocked with what we need for our visitors. But sometimes I just need a little bit more. Also, in response to Mr. Thompson's problem, when you live here long enough, you learn to avoid the bad spots. You just keep going down Broadway, go up Jones, back down Main, and then up Fort. Thank you. Bye.
Anybody else like to address the Commission? Yes, sir.
Stanley Rickert, TRC, 1705 Carey Street. I'm beating a dead horse still. There's nobody enforcing the codes over there in the residential zone for a commercial business. And I was wondering how come a man's opinion rates more than what the codes are? His opinion doesn't stand. It's just an idea. His, his thoughts, it's not proof, it's not positive. And I'm referring to Mr. Rubin. His, his letter to Ms. Diller was a farce. I'd like to see something done. It's getting out of hand. It's getting crazy. Mr. Armiho should go back over there and see the ruts in the road again, just from the excess traffic that drives up and down there all the time. People spinning their wheels, making a lot of, you know, unnecessary trips into our residential area. making a lot of, you know, unnecessary trips into our residential area. And if anything should be done, it'd be helpful. It's getting to a point where the other neighbors are starting to wonder what's going on, and I'd like to see something happen other than just, you know, talking about it. I appreciate your time and have a good day and hope we have a good weekend this coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission? Ms. Allen?
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Fitness Memorial Park.
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Maggie Allen, Administrator at work. I've been with my husband. I was late with my lodger's tax this year. I've had too much tragedy. And I begged and pleaded with him. They said I'd have to come to you. And I would appreciate any amount of money that you can help us with lodger's tax or city money, whatever. Because I was late, and it was my fault. I don't blame anybody else. But I'd appreciate anything because we're getting the new granite wall, and it's going to take money to advertise, to get the people here when we open it up and keep it going. Last year, lodger's tax only gave me enough money to pay for one sign item for Columbus. We had to drop the sign via the Moose Lodge. That's all I got. I had no money for flyers or anything else. Thank God Melissa for it, worked with me, and we got money for the flyers. But this year, apparently, I'm not even going to get enough money to pay for one sign. And like Lorena said, my pockets are going to run out too. People don't realize what it takes. You have to run and get this and that. You're called to the wall three and four times. Well, that's out of my pocket, not anybody else. And I don't mind it. I love the wall, it means a lot to me. And I will be there to help and do it as long as I can. But I need you all's help to help. Because like I told the lodger's tax, it's not my part, it's you all's part. All of us working up there are volunteers, nobody gets paid. We get schools coming. I was very proud. We had almost 100 kids up there Monday. I called my volunteers in because we're closed on Monday, and they were there to tour. We had 100 kids. El Paso canceled out this year because they couldn't get enough money. It's what I says every year, but this year they didn't have enough money to come. We get the Coral Schools coming and that, so a lot of people don't realize this. A lot of people from here have never even been to the museum and to the park, and we've got a beautiful museum up there. We've got more history than most of them. So I'd appreciate anything you all can help us with for the wall to keep it going. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Hansen. I'm from Elephant Butte. I just want to give you guys a little update on the off-highway vehicle community of today. We're not the same group that used to run crazy on the beaches in the '60s and '70s. We have families that were, been brought up in this, they've learned safety ways. We wear helmets. The state has now made us able to register our vehicles through the state. We have to carry insurance in order to have our registrations. The vehicles are not the same as the '60s and '70s when we were riding three-wheelers that were very crazy. The new vehicles are very safety-conscious. We have highway signals, taillights, horns, other assorted things on it. And I think what we're looking for is a way to let our families enjoy the community around us, the area around us, and we sure would appreciate it if you'd help us out with that. Elephant Butte has passed these laws. Sierra County just recently passed that we could ride on the county roads, and we just need, we don't need you to open all your roads up. We don't want to run rapid in your neighborhoods. We just want to get to our trails from our camping spots, our RV parks, our hotels and whatever, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the commission? Ms. Perron?
Sophia Perron, Truth or Consequences, citizen and taxpayer. And I want to make a few comments on what the previous people have said. I listened to the last meeting on streaming on KCHS while I was in Washington, DC. So it was a real lot of fun to hear that exercise in democracy. And I want to make another comment about Mr. Green and his comments, derisive comments on citizens. He, the other day, Ron Pesorek and Jeff, Dorn Bush came from the Public Utility Advisory Board as citizens and spoke at this meeting, and Mr. Green told them they did not have a right to speak as citizens, they did not have a right to speak up in the meeting. It was disgusting. And I listen to him on the radio now. And I'm sorry for Mr. Ashbaugh, that the people he chose for the commission are all yes-manning to Mr. Green, Mr. Heschler and his son works for the city, and Mr. Baca is going to have ATVs, that's going to be the big deal. I would like to give Ms. Whitehead a kudo. The meeting at Hillsborough, the Black Range Lodge, it said that Mrs. Whitehead mentioned that since we have a dog park now, maybe we should keep the dogs out of the other parks so the whole town is not one big fat dog park. And this weekend, when you go to the market, you can look and see how many blades of grass there are at Ralph Edwards Park, and see how many dead trees there are, and see how beautifully it's been taken care of. The folks who have the Battlefor Alliance only drive over the property 22 times during the spring with their trucks. If we went to their farms and drove over their farms while they're here, they wouldn't be very happy. So we have a town that's falling apart. There is no code enforcement. The only place the code's been enforced is next to Mr. Rubin's and Mr. Fuentes' house, and next to the mayor's house. The mayor's property, problem property, was taken care of first, and it was sold to some local person for $20,000 or whatever. But the rest of us who have problem properties can forget it. We get citations, we get the police coming over, we have the fire chief telling us that everything's okay, he can't do anything about pig styres, and we have realtors who list these pig styres and then sell them to people. And I'm worried about rotary.
Thank you. Anyone else like to join the fun? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Bill Fink from TRC. I didn't realize how long the golf course problems have been going on. Mr. Tucker mentioned 2007, he wanted to address the water issues. I think the cost that we're, and of course, that the city's chosen is way out of line. We have a man who's proven that he cannot do the golf course, he cannot maintain the grass. I've been gone for a little over a week, I got back last evening, and the first thing I did was drive by the golf course getting home, and crap, it looked worse now than when I left a week ago. I can see fixing the sprinkler heads if we take the time on the lines first. There's no point in doing either of those unless we can filter the water. Chemicals are not the answer. I spent 40 years working in the dairy industry, and everybody thought chemicals, enzymes, all these other things would fix things when it actually boiled down to proper management. So I would just like to see a positive course taken on the golf course. I have to agree with Mr. Tucker, it's just not working right now. I realize you've got a tough job, you've got a very tough job. I know that from my experience in the past of running a state agency. It was a job that nobody appreciated when I was there. Then after I was gone, can you come back? No. You've got a very tough job, I don't envy you at all. Excuse me. Decisions are hard to make, they're difficult to make, and you're going to have somebody disagree with you half the time. Some people will agree with you about 25% of the time, and the rest just simply don't care. It's just a tough place to be in. But before we move ahead with the golf course replacing the sprinkler heads and putting in the sulfur treatment, we should be looking at the filtration system and unclogging those lines. We've got sprinklers out there that don't turn around, that usually denotes that a head's clogged or there's not enough water going through there. And I've also heard we're losing water, our system leaks. How do we know? Have we put a meter at the pump and then another meter down line to see how much water is being lost between the two meters? It's a very simple way to check it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you for participating in the public comment period. The next item is response to public comments. Are there any responses, any commissioner or city manager? I will start off. A couple things. Number one, unfortunately, Ms. Perron is not here, but I have never attended a Public Utility Advisory Board in my life. I believe she has me confused with someone else. Her other remarks about my home or whatever, I don't know what she's talking about. Steve, in relationship to the Hot Springs Aquifer Study, that was not on Citizens Dimes, that was a grant that Professor Pearson from the Mexico Tech got, called up Manager Fuentes and said, "I've got $50,000. Would you like us to do an analysis of the health of the Hot Springs Aquifer?" We took him up on that, and he did issue a report. So Hans Townsend, what I'd like you to do, Mr. Townsend, on your idea on the FOSH and Main Street, if you could send a letter of suggestion to Manager Fuentes, I serve as vice chair on the RPO representing the city, which is the regional planning organization which is attended by NMDOT, and that is, I think, the second week in July if I'm not mistaken. So I can, we can directly ask them that request rather than just have an anonymous request over email. We can kind of personalize it. The other thing I'd like to do is read the following statement. During part of Ron Fenn's public comment on May 9th, he stated, and I quote, "The meeting at the Black Range Lodge, which cost the city hundreds of dollars, was all about what you can do for the city employees. What you can do for the city employees that will cost the residents more money." End quote. I did not understand how that statement could be made since Ron was not in attendance at the six-hour meeting, and since the report that Commissioner Heschler presented at the April 25th Commission Meeting had 53 bullet points of discussion, which only one referred to the city employees. And yet, by his statement, Ron would have you believe that the retreat was all about what we can do for city employees. I believe this distortion of the facts was meant to cast the commission and Manager Fuentes in a negative light, and frustrated, I used inappropriate language that I regretted afterwards, and sent the following email the next day, and it reads as follows. "Ron, please accept my apology for uncalled statement, for my uncalled statement that was uttered in frustration during a response to public comment yesterday. It seems my mouth was running ahead of my brain. That said, I have always supported the right of people to express opposing opinions. However, I do not believe it is in the best interest of the community for the commission to tolerate misrepresentation of the truth." Anyone else have any responses?
Mayor. I have public comments I'd like to make. The first one is in response to Mr. Trujillo. The phrase he used, I really appreciate it, and I'm going to reread it to us, and to the public, and it is "strong on issues, soft on people." It's so much easier for me as a commissioner to listen to somebody who has a real concern about an issue as opposed to a direct personal attack. It's just my personal preference. The other comment I have, and thank you, I thought, for doing that, I don't know if he's listening. The other one is Mr. Townsend. I do the main and FOSH street a lot, and I was responsible years ago for the planting of the tree right there, and DOT was concerned that that tree would be the deterrent for being able to see oncoming traffic, where in fact, right now, it's the cars parked on the south side of that street. And I like the idea of a traffic where I didn't even know that that was availability. Thank you, Mayor, for wanting to take that directly to DOT. The other comment I heard that I wanted to mention to you is the one from Ms. DiMarino. And I had an opportunity to have her handwalk me through some digital marketing that she used for the Hot Springs Festival, and it's extraordinarily successful. I was very surprised that she had, when she showed it to me and it was still eight or nine days out, and she had had some 65,000 hits on it. That's a lot for just a couple hundred dollars worth of investment. And she was kind enough to offer to me personally to show me how to do it. I know that it's, she made the comment that that's kind of the direction that we're taking, and I think it's an extraordinary way for us to maybe take our dollars to get a much bigger bang for our buck if that phrase is to be usable. Anyway, those are the comments that I wanted to make, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Heschler?
Yes, sir. Just real quickly, I wanted to thank everybody for coming here today and giving your public comments. It's nice to see the audience of this size, and it's nice to see many fresh faces and new faces. Sometimes we get the same old people here every meeting, and it's nice to see all the activity and all the new faces here. So thank you all for coming out. A couple of comments I want to make. One is that regarding the golf course, when we had our planning retreat, we spent the first better part of an hour on the golf course itself, deciding which direction we wanted to go with the golf course, and this is the direction that we wanted to go for now. We also checked with our attorneys, if I understand this correctly, and we were in compliance with our contracts. We didn't break any rules or regulations, we were fine, and we extended that contract. I've been up to the golf course five times now in the last month. Three times were unannounced, and all three times I saw management at the golf course. So I'm satisfied that the management is being responsive out there. The last time I was at the golf course, I actually noticed that it was in better condition than I'd seen it in quite a while. So there is some positive movement, and I urge the public to stay patient with us. We are working through this process, and we'll know a lot more at the end of the season and next year, I think, when we have some hard decisions to make about the future of the golf course. So stay patient with us and let us work on that. The other comment I want to make is about the animal shelter and volunteerism. I've been working with volunteers for many years, I know the value of volunteers in any capacity that we do everywhere. And so it's important, and I think it's incumbent upon our police department to establish policies for volunteers, to establish job descriptions for volunteers, to start getting that ball rolling. I think it's an important part of what we should do, and we should be responding to the programs. And I would recommend that if we have support groups for the animal shelter, it's not going to be, it shouldn't be an advisory group because sometimes we're at odds, but it should be a support group or a fringe group. I think they're easier to work with, and I think, you know, having everybody under the same rope that is dedicated in the same direction is important. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then we will move on. I'd just like to make the announcement, Attorney Rubin has to be in court at 11:15. So depending upon where we are at 11 o'clock, I might stop the agenda and we would move directly into executive session, which shouldn't take probably no more than five minutes, I believe, just discussing about a piece of property, and then we would bring everyone back in here. So let's see if we can move this right along. I will stand for a motion for approval of the consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent calendar of E1, City Commission Regular Minutes of April 25th, 2018.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Need a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Heschler. Any further concerns? Discussion? Hearing non-wheters in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carries unanimously. Next item is F1, Discussion Action Ordinance Number 696 for publication, adding section Next item is F1, Discussion Action Ordinance Number 696 for publication, adding section 4-236 to the Municipal Code related to the Property Maintenance Code. Presenter is Attorney, Mr. Rubin.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. It's my understanding that the CID Division of the State of New Mexico collaborated with other agencies, and they have promulgated a document called the International Property Maintenance Code, and it's been encouraged by the CID. The other municipalities should be looking at this code as a means of adoption.
Attorney Rubin, just for recalcitrance, to let everyone know what CID stands for.
Construction Industry. Industries. Some of the word, okay, yes. Okay. Thank you, Robbie. And they have, again, they have promulgated a code called the International Property Maintenance Code, and I have a copy with me, and I reviewed it, and I do believe that there are quite a few provisions that would be helpful for the city. There is a chapter on dangerous buildings. There is a chapter on light ventilation and occupancy limitations. There's a chapter on plumbing facilities and fixture requirements, and a chapter on mechanical electrical requirements, a chapter on fire safety requirements, and some of the provisions I think even pertaining to dangerous buildings would be very helpful. There is a provision regarding as the city, you know, take action in event of emergency, for example. So, my thought would be to suggest that we would adopt the property code, you know, this document, the Property Maintenance Code. There is an exception, though. I originally had it where by adopting this code, that we would repeal sections 4-226 through 4-235, our current code, which deals with dangerous buildings. When I went through the, our current code and compared to the maintenance code, our three sections of our words is that I want to retain, sections 4-231, 232, and 233. And the reason why is because that's just what procedure that we've been following when we wish to condemn a building. There's inspection prepared by the appropriate official. It's a procedure we've been used to following here, where we would allow someone to come in and make an objection after the City Commission has adopted a resolution, and then, you know, we have the batter shell process, and that actually is a conform to the state statute. So, I felt the best thing to recommend would be, let's consider going to publication on the code that will retain those three sections from our current code. And I know Susanna and Robbie, I know you've done a lot of work on this, so if you have any comments, help.
Essentially, this follows the International Building Code and all the specifics in it, but it helps when you don't have a certified building inspector anymore, that Susanna can take that on and see a building that is dilapidated, falling down, has specifics in here that you follow, and she could go ahead and still handle that, and we can still get our town cleaned up. And that's what this, where many of other municipalities have adopted it and are doing that right now. And so, we've had it for several years. We haven't had the need of it because I had the authority to go ahead and do that type thing, but now we don't have that with me leaving, and so this will help for her to continue to still take care of properties that are dilapidated, falling down, need repair, or need to be removed, so.
Okay. Susanna, do you have anything to add, or?
No, I mean, the biggest thing is just with Robbie leaving and not having that, you know, building inspector sort of approach to it, this has a lot of standards and codes that me or any of our zoning officials, you know, down the line, could look at and say, yes, this is the standard for, you know, how we're interpreting, you know, a dilapidated building or a dangerous structure, and that would allow us to move forward with a great deal of consistency, which I think would be a good thing for follow-through on getting the city cleaned up the way, you know, we hear from people a lot.
Thank you. Questions, concerns from the Commission?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clark.
So, you know, I started reading this International Building Code, and I'm not a building inspector, so there's a lot of stuff in there that is a little out of my league. But the concern that I have is, one, what Mr. Rubin said, obviously, is we've been following a procedure, and, you know, we start changing procedure, then maybe it's not such a good idea, so we should maybe keep that procedure. But how many of us here at this desk have read the International Building Code? So, that being said, we're taking your word for this is how we're going to be looking at somebody's building, and the next thing we know is maybe a building's being condemned and it hasn't been given a proper, or, I don't know, I'm just having a hard time losing a building inspector, for one, because I think that has been extremely valuable, to have somebody on our staff that is a contractor, that understands the different parts of a building, and I'm not saying anything that you don't, and it's the interpretation of the book, and I'm just not sure I'm ready to make that decision today whether we should go with this International Building Code until those of us have actually had the chance to read it and can make a, you know, a really intelligent decision. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Attorney Rubin, correct me if I'm wrong. This guideline does not supersede the process that the city has presently in place in relationship to identifying a structure and then having the owner of that structure be able to talk about it, and it's just not that they're going to wake up one day when they're shopping and they come home and the building's been demolished. I mean, there is a process in place.
Right, and that's why I'm specifically exempting sections 4-231, 232, and 233. We would maintain the same procedure that we've been following. And again, that procedure actually is taken from our state statute, 3-18-5. So, I'm really kind of getting the best of both worlds, because, you know, there are some good things in these, in this proposed code, which does discuss dangerous building things that we don't have, but I'm keeping the procedure in place for when we actually go to condemn a building, as to the procedure we would follow for us adopting a resolution, serving the notice on the property owner, then they would have 10 days to object and bring their concerns to you. We give them a batter shell hearing. So, that's the safeguards we're keeping in place. Now, that being said, I understand, Commissioner Clark, I, it is, there is a law here, and if you need more time to review it, I understand that, but we need to get the ball rolling, and that's why it's in front of you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and just first, I'd like, just for the benefit of the Commission, just a reminder, and for the public, that in a lot of our communities, especially small communities, it's not an option for us that we don't want to hire a new building inspector. Mr. Travis is retiring, but the state has passed a law that requires all municipalities to have all of their industries under their one house. For example, we have to have a general building inspector, a mechanical and electrical. In a lot of the small communities, we can't afford that. So, this is happening across the state, and a lot of the small communities, unless you're Almocur, Keleskruces, you can afford that, but the communities are relying now on Construction Industries Division for their inspections. So, we're having to adjust the permitting process, because people are still going to be required to get a building permit, but now they're going to have to be inspected by the state. So, it's not because the city does not want to hire new building inspectors, because we're not, we can't, we can't afford it, we can't do it. That's one. The second thing I'd like to kind of clarify, because we already, this is a International Property Maintenance Code. The International Building Code, I believe, is already adopted by the city.
Correct.
That's correct. So, that code will be followed by the CID inspector.
Correct. Right.
So, this is, again, this is just another mechanism, because we're not going to have a building inspector, for us to have a code that we can apply for staff that are not the inspectors or qualified inspectors to say, well, how can we apply this maintenance code on there? So, it's kind of another layer of ability to be able to address certain things without having to call in the official building inspector, electrical inspector, and so forth. So, plumbing is another industry that we won't be able to do, the state will be doing. So, that's, and so is that correct, Robbie?
That is correct, yeah. And essentially, CID or Construction Industries, they don't have any provisions for condemnation. So, they can't come in and condemn a building for us, anything like that. I mean, if it's a dangerous condition, they could come in and say, hey, you've got to stop this until you can, you know, get it protected and, you know, put fencing up or something like that, barriers up. So, this is our only course to go with to do that. The state is backed up. They, I'm, you know, trying to get on with the state to be an inspector, but they haven't opened anything up. They're three to four weeks backed up on permitting. I mean, it's going to be a little bit of an issue. We've been, you know, catching two or three people a week with no permits. We've been turning them over, saying, hey, you've got to go to CID and get your permit. So, there's going to be some transition here. Hopefully, the state will get people on, be able to start helping with all that, but this is adopted or built by ICC, the International Code Council. That's who I was certified through, where we take all our testing, who writes all the code books, everything, and they've done, I don't know how many studies on this, and got this down to where, hey, you could take this and use it as a municipality without being a building inspector, and that's the goal, is to try to still be able to proceed in our town, to keep it clean, to get people to take care of their properties. You know, even me as a building inspector, I had people still fight me on, oh, well, you know, this and that. Well, our code specifically says, and so does this one, if, you know, you don't have proper access, if you don't have egress windows in the bedrooms, those are things that are dangerous conditions that, you know, you have to go after that, either fix it or take it down, one or the other, and that's what we still want to go on, you know? So, this will really help. It's what other communities are using when we go to our conferences, that's what they're using, and so it's not something new, you know? This was done even, I think, before 2012. This was the latest version that we had. I think there's a 2015 now, and we just put in our ordinance that we're going to adopt the latest version, and it's the same thing. We adopt the latest version of the building code, and we have to have those backups, so when people challenge us, we can go back to, okay, this is the way the state and the code is, and this is how we respond to it. And, you know, we have to have the procedures to get to the end result that we're looking for. So, I think it's a good thing and to do, you know, I wouldn't be, it's just there to give her a tool to be able to help to keep going. If not, you know, she's not going to have much teeth to be able to do anything. You guys are going to have some big issues coming up in the town, because people are going to go all over the place with stuff, and so I think it's something we really need to look at and get done.
Yeah, and we've had this conversation in here, and I think it's really important that we do have some kind of standardized system. My question is this, is this going to be a layperson who's reading this book and saying, this is right and this is not? That being said, would it be too much to ask to just put this off for two weeks to at least allow the Commission to take a look at this book? We're laypeople. If we can make sense out of it and it makes sense to us, then I would feel very confident that any one of our other employees would be able to make the same sense when they go out to the public and say, this is a safety issue or whatever. Is that asking too much?
It's your call.
I'm making a, that's my proposal, is just to give us a couple, a couple weeks to reread this ourselves.
Before I ask for a motion or any other comments or concerns, I will stand for a motion.
I'll make that motion, that we just put this off for two weeks.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Clark, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Any further concerns or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Harry, unanimously, we will see it back on the agenda in two weeks.
And in the meantime, if you do see something that you would suggest, we should look at, certainly let me know. Forward, two weeks is up, that we're actually thinking about it now, next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. And also, obviously, we'll need to get that in the hands of the Commission as quick as possible to give everyone an opportunity to digest it. The next item is F2, Discussion Action Resolution Number 332017/2018, approving the fiscal year 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Our presenter is our Finance Director, Ms. Melissa Boss.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager Fuentes. Care attention. First, let me start with the last workshop that we had at the beginning of the month, which had a heavy cloud. With this prelim budget, we have seen some light through this cloud, so we're really happy to announce that. With that being said...
Turn it around a little, some aside.
With that being said, in 2018-19 new general fund budget, we're looking at our estimated revenue to be 3.3 million. Our estimated expense will be 5.2 millions. Our transfer in will be 1.2 million. With revenue in net, it's 4.1 million, which gives the general fund 444,000. However, as we all know, DFA requires us to have a reserve, which will be 440,000 that we have to. One of the things that we want to continue to remind the Commissioners in the community is that we continue to go with our revenue going down and our expense continuing to go up, and so this is what this graph shows, is that example of that. You know, one of the things that we see that you guys are making some hard decisions is thinking outside the box and how to bring revenue in, and that's a really great thing, because as we know, we can't just count on our GRT, and shaking the couch cushions, you know, is getting where we're limited on that. So, for this fiscal year, we're looking at 3.3 on the revenue and the expense 5.2. Where we have the good news, we had a deficit on our workshop, and again, we just wanted to remind you guys, the whole big picture that we wanted to show the Commissioners in the community is that how we have to really work towards clearing up those deficits. So, starting with the general fund again, we're looking at revenue 3.3, our expense 5.2, including our DFA reserve requirements, which is 440,000, which is giving us an ending cash balance of 3,700. Our special revenues, we're looking at an estimate revenue as 1 point million, and our expense is 2 million, equalling a total cash balance of 820,000. Our enterprise funds, we're estimating to have 12 million, and our expense funds, we're looking at having 8.9 million, with a total cash ending balance of 4.7 million. Our capital funds, 300s, we're looking at a revenue to be 5.1 million, our expense to be 6.1 million, with a total cash balance equalling 3.6 million. Overall, our total cash balances are $10 million. Again, one of the things that we just wanted to remind you, where we get our revenue, we can see 44% is municipal taxes, 42% is state share taxes, our license and permits are only 1%, intergovernment grants, 6%, miscellaneous, 2%, fines, 2%, and charges and services, 4%. Our overall tax for the general fund, we're estimating it to come in at 1.5 million, a subtotal of, on the state share taxes, as 1.3 million. Our general fund revenue plus transfers in, as you can see, our transfers in represents 35% of our general fund. Our municipal taxes represent 29%, our shared taxes equals 27%, and other at 9%. Again, revenue plus transfers, we're looking at 5.1 million, revenue plus transfers, 5.1 million dollars overall through the enterprise funds. Expenses through the general funds, we're looking at 59% to... Expenses through the general funds, we're looking at 59% to salary and benefits, operating is 30%, uh, transfers out is 11%. One of the bigger reminders that we wanna provide to you all, as we said at our workshop, um, our benefits for city employees are going up 4%, which is very high. Um, so our salaries for the general fund, we're looking at 63.7% will be making up our general fund. And transfers in will be 1.7, which that is exactly what we did transfers in last year. So that's what our goal was, is trying to keep that within that same margin. Um, one of the things that we continue to hear is, uh, the city of truth or consequences debt. And so one of the commissioners requested us to kinda look into that and give the history of it. So if you guys could look at the very bottom with the, the red and blue, um, our original debt was 13 million dollars. At this time, we have 8.2 million dollars. And so you can see, we've made significant, um, decrease on our, our debt. Um, one of our debts that we carry right now is Tier C2, which was done in 2001, and one of our newest ones is in 2016. The other thing that was very important that we wanted to share was we wanted to do an out, analysis in regards to our GRT. And as we know, our GRT is separated in different funding sources. So we, what we did is we looked at the present, and, which was now, this fiscal year, and then we looked at last fiscal year, which was an odd year, as we keep saying, because the GRT was really high. If you go to number three, one of the things that you're gonna see that was tremendous was, it was construction. Um, we're looking at 586,000 that it decreased from last year to what we are seeing today. As of date, we're looking at our GRT down 632,000. Again, the majority of it being from our construction or the GRT. And I will hand this over to Mr. Fuentes in regards to the projects and equipment.
Thank you, Melissa. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and, uh, members of the public. So with, with that picture, you know, it's always a challenge to try to, uh, seek funding for a lot of the infrastructure. I mean, we've heard comments about the water lines, the sewer lines, uh, you know, facilities, the animal, uh, the animal shelter and everything else, services, operating expenses. So we have very limited resources to be able to accommodate every, all the needs of the community. And with that, some of, one of the major things that we look at every year is we focus on projects and equipment. What, where are we gonna be focusing on coming up next fiscal year? And as you can see here, these are the upcoming fiscal year, Mayor Commissioners, projects that we're gonna be, uh, tackling next fiscal year, uh, which is, one of the projects is the downtown road rehab projects. So you're looking at Sims-Macedo, Macedu Road Rehab, and we did get a state appropriation, uh, uh, this year. And we're also gonna use local match money from our city funds to be able to, uh, do the rehab on the downtown streets for Sims and Macedu. We're also looking at replacing, because we're repaving the entire road, we're looking at replacing the water line and the sewer line at the same time. Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Uh, so that, but that's not through a grant, that's actually being done through our local shared resources, through our, our, our funds, our ending cash balances, as Melissa pointed out. The law enforcement complex project, as you all know, the, the, uh, the referendum uh, did not pass, so that's yet to be determined, but it's still on the list. Uh, we're still, uh, working to finalize the wastewater treatment plant Phase 2B project, and that will be coming up pretty soon. Uh, we're looking at finishing up the CDPG sewer rehab project, those are the manholes that you see out in the community being dug up and being replaced. Uh, we're looking at a water system, cook station, and, uh, water lines. And this is an application that our grants coordinator, Tracy Burnett, who's right now at an ICIP Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan training in, in Albuquerque. Uh, we did get notice from Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, uh, uh, from the state, and they have preliminary information for us of a 2 million plus loan with, uh, obviously would be a low interest, but also with a 800, potential 800,000 dollar, uh, plus, uh, loan forgiveness, almost like a grant. But as you can see there, it's, it would still require, as Melissa pointed out, with our debt being right now at 2 mil, uh, 8 million dollars, uh, we don't get all of it being grant. Some of it is gonna be loan. And in this case, we have at least a potential funding source, but that's gonna require if we, if we, uh, proceed forward with it, with a 2 million dollar loan. I believe it was, uh, this information was shared with the, uh, impact, the Public Utility Advisory Board, and they, they were endorsing moving forward. But we do have another application for water system improvements, uh, through USDA, and that's, the cook station is in the same, and, uh, that project is for downtown water lines. Uh, so that's still, so we're waiting on, see what happens with USDA. Uh, we're gonna be, proceed forward with fuel farm Phase 3. Uh, we have, again, the water and electric meter AMI project, that's to be determined. Uh, we are gonna continue with our soccer field improvements, our ball field improvements at Lewis Armijo, uh, sports complex. Uh, we do have another local government road fund project that will be coming up. Uh, we have the Silovista Electrical Project that was on the agenda, that will be discussed shortly. Uh, we also have applications for USDA for additional equipment. Uh, we are looking at paving along the solid waste collection center. Uh, we're also gonna be looking at, uh, purchasing a site loader for solid waste, and also improving some of our commercial dumpsters. As you can see, a lot of them are local. Uh, we're also looking at, uh, water wells rehab for infrastructure. Uh, we're gonna continue with the electrical, uh, pole replacement projects. Uh, we're also looking at making improvements on our Polyworks yard. Uh, the electric department is, is, uh, making improvements in the offices, so there, there are definitely, uh, much needed improvements for, uh, better use of the facility. Uh, we did receive a New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant. Uh, we're still looking at doing some civic center improvements, and of course, the veterans' wall, which should be completed within the next couple of months. Uh, so those are some of the projects that we're looking at, uh, pursuing this next fiscal year. And as the, this fiscal year ends, we'll, obviously, we'll update that. And with that, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, unless there's anything else from Melissa, we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, thank you. Concerns, questions, Commissioner Clark?
Comments?
Comments.
Um, so I have a special thank you to, uh, Ms. Torres, Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. G. I missed the budget hearings, and the three of them made time to sit down with me and go through the concerns that I had, um, over the budget. And I also want to compliment Ms. Torres, um, when you show initially a loss of 400 and some odd thousand dollars on the preliminary budget, and to be able to pull that back up into the black is pretty impressive. The other comment I wanted to make is that most of our enterprise funds are operating in the black, which I haven't seen all of them do for a long period of time. Knowing that we haven't raised rates on a couple of them, and the comments that Manager Fuentes is making, knowing that we may need to take out some more, um, debt, that we have that ability to show to whomever we're gonna borrow that money from, that we have the ability to make that payment. Also to note that, um, somewhere around half a million dollars of principal is gonna be, um, paid down this next fiscal year. So, um, you know, the 2 million that Manager Fuentes has talked about is, you know, by all standards, a million and a half. And it still keeps us below that 10 million dollars that me and ex-Commissioner Richter hated, um, that number. We'd just like to stay below that number, because it seems to be manageable. Um, but anyway, so, um, the questions that I had, um, were answered, um, by these three people, and I feel very confident with, with what you're presenting forward, and knowing that the one other issue that we were talking about is separating code enforcement and the animal shelter, so that we can see those two separated, um, as opposed to combined on the, um, the budget process. So, uh, these are just my comments I wanted to make, and I, I think they've done a really remarkable job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark, with your financial background, uh, I was comfortable when I read this, I am now more comfortable. So, thank you. Um, any other questions, concerns? If hearing none, I will stand for a motion, please, for approval.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve. I see, how do you want this word, Ms. Torres?
To approve the 2018 prelim?
I want to approve.
Right, it's right on.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 33-2017-2018, approving the fiscal year of 2018-2019 preliminary budget, as presented by Melissa Torres, Finance Director, and Manager Fuentes, City Manager.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Clark. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hessler. Further discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call Madam Clark, please?
General Steve Bree?
Yes.
General Sandra Waye?
Aye.
General Walczek?
Yes.
General Kathy Harper?
Aye.
General Paul Laka?
Thank you, parried unanimously. The next item is F3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, uh, F3 Discussion Action Resolution Number 34-2017/2018, setting fees for animal shelter. Our presenters will be Sabrina Day, who's the Animal Shelter
Uh, the impound fee, uh, for impound animals, 30 dollars. We kinda stayed the same with the old shelter. Uh, the boarding fee is 15, that's by day. Quarantine fee is, uh, the, uh, same as, uh, the impound fee is 30. Adoption price is, for dogs, is 55, and puppies, 55, that includes the adoption fee, the provo dis tempore, the microchip, and bordatella. And the, um, cats and kittens are 75, uh, that includes the adoption fee, the, uh, first PCT, the feline leukemia test, the, uh, and the microchip and bordatella. And I can verify, the adoption fee is 25, to break it down for you. The test is 20 for the cats, the provo is 10, microchip is 10, and bordatella is 10, and the PCT is 10 also.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, so the way we came up with our fee schedule is kind of, uh, we based that off of what Doc Dawkins has at her shelter now. Um, the only thing and differences we have are, um, we don't charge a daily fee, um, when we impound an animal. And that was to make that easier for the owner, and less expensive, and easier for them to get their animal back to them. Um, that way, we weren't making it impossible for somebody that wasn't financially able to pay for their animal to get back. Because we all know accidents, animals get out, um, sometimes they dig, like there was comments made earlier. And so we want to make sure that we get that dog back to their owner, and that it's financially realistic that they can pay that fee. Um, a lot of our prices are different, um, in comparison to hers, that we kinda changed, and that's just to make it more affordable for the public, and more of a realistic price for adoptions. We did, uh, go over these fees and compare them to, to the Doc Dawkins' schedule. Um, we also offer the, in, the boarding, which is charged daily. So if somebody needs to board their dogs with us for vacation, or they're sick, um, that's 15 dollars a day that we charge. Um, one thing also that we do is safekeeping. We don't charge for that. Um, we've had some elderly people that went into the hospital, or they were sick, that needed us to keep their dogs for a day, and we kept them, just to help them out, um, because we know how hard that can be. And we don't wanna end up having to keep their dogs, or make it harder on them than what it already is, especially if they're going through some kind of medical issues as well. Um, at this time, we stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions, concerns, Commissioner Clark?
Um, being an adoption fan myself, um, the concern I, I see on this, and I suspect you've already addressed this amongst yourselves, um, or not, but, um, when I adopted my animals, it was from the Dawkins outfit. And every single one of my animals had, I had to pay in advance for adoption and/or neutering, a spare neuter. And I don't see that on here. And so I, how are we addressing that? Because we don't wanna have all of these puppies and kittens all over the town.
Yes, ma'am. Um, if I can answer that for you, uh, we, what we did is we partnered with Doc Dawkins. Um, she actually gives us, um, a 20% certificate to give to the adoption, um, families that come and adopt. And what they have to do is, before we can adopt the animal out, they have to pay ahead of time with Doc Dawkins to get the rabies and a spare neuter. They bring us the receipt, receipt showing that they've paid. We communicate with Doc Dawkins, uh, we even transport the animal down there for them, and then they pick the animal up with us, pay their adoption fees, and then the animal's adopted out. That way, we can ensure that it is getting their AB shots, and it is getting spare neuter.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That was, that was the concern that I had. I also want to let you know that, um, I did miss your open house, but Ms. Day was sweet enough to take me on a little tour of that building, and I think they've done a remarkable job. I really do. Thank you for all your hard work.
And, and I would like to comment as well, um, just to kinda let you know, within the last seven weeks, we've adopted out seven animals, and that includes cats. Um, that is way higher than the adoption rate at Doc Dawkins Shelter. Um, and the only animals that we have put down at this time were animals that were sick that we couldn't save, which were taken to the vet first, um, or animals that had attacked livestock, and we didn't have a choice at that point, because we can't legally adopt those animals out. Um, all our feral cats are taken to ranches. We haven't put any feral cats down. Um, and we are, we're able to save one sick cat, one with a broken leg, one with a broken leg, and one with a very bad infection on its belly, and they're ready, one is ready for adoption, so.
So do we take those up to Doc Dawkins, and then do she bill us then for, for the work on the animal, and then we try to put that forward to an adoption, or are we, um, taking that in our...
So, the way that we're doing it right now is, uh, we have an open PO with Doc Dawkins for any kind of emergencies, like the cat with a broken leg, the cat that was brought in with the infection. Um, we take them there and they get assessed by her. Um, she tells us, you know, what we can do, like one was just some medication that we needed. Um, and we pay for the services, um, through our budget. That way, we can get the animal treated. Um, and then the animal goes through the intake process, so we can assess whether or not they can be adoptable at that point or not. Thank you.
I've got a couple, uh, questions and concerns, um, and thank you for all your efforts. I, I wanna follow up on something that Commissioner Hessler said in a second. Uh, boarding fees, uh, 15 dollars per day. I personally have a problem with that, because it's gonna be perceived that the city is in competition with private enterprise. And we have people here in the community who offer that service to citizens. And, um, I don't know how we could be, um, hotel of last resort, so to speak, but I don't wanna go into business and be competitive with our own businesses here. I don't think that's the function of government. So that is, that is one of my concerns. The other one, on the sheet that I got, it says adoption fee 25 dollars, then there's 10 dollars in the space next. I didn't know what the 10 dollars stood for.
The 10 dol, the 10 dollars is the first PCT for, uh, uh, the cats?
Okay.
For adoption.
Okay. And, um, coming from the volunteer background, I think everyone probably in the world knows that my wife and I volunteered for Busky Del Apache for four and a half years as full-time resident volunteers. I cannot, uh, express how important it is that the citizens of Truth or Consequences want to volunteer their services and their time to make this the best animal shelter that we can possibly do. And I'm not really quite sure what your schedule is, and if you formulated policies or plans, but I certainly would hope that in the overall picture, and sooner than later, that volunteers are part of the success to running of that building. One or two people cannot do it all.
And yes, sir, and we're currently, um, trying to get, um, two full-time employees hired for Ms. Day at the animal shelter. That's our main focus right now. Um, we have reached out to SCARS, who came through. We had a meeting with Ms. Robin Brodsky. Um, their program donated a thousand dollars to the animal shelter, um, to go towards, uh, what we both foresee as trying to get a, a, a dog park out there on the property for the animals, and for people that wanna adopt, that can interact with the animals. to adopt, that can interact with the animals. We also have a plan that in the future, we are going to have volunteers. We're just trying to focus on getting employees in there, and then coming up with a volunteer plan. That has been our future plans all along. Yes, sir.
And if you're just keeping in communication with those individuals and those people, those organizations, and let them know that is part of the plan. I sense there's just frustration here, because they're willing to offer their expertise and their time, and they don't know if you're going to take them up on that offer, or when you're going to take them up on that offer. So, I think if we kind of keep everyone in the same grist mill, it will make, we can move forward smoother.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hessler?
First of all, I want to thank you for taking a lenient attitude toward dog orders and cat orders, if they happen to accident that their animals out. We are a core community, and anything that we can do to stay an animal's alive, and take it easy on our people is important. I know that dogs, and I think cats residing in municipal limits are required to be licensed. How is licensing handled when these dogs are impounded? Are they required to be licensed before you return them back to their owners, or how do we deal with that?
Part of the way we are able to determine that is, we have, of course, we have microchip readings. So, any animals that are microchipped, we're able to pull up their owner's information. And then usually, Animal Control, who's there a lot of the time at the animal shelter, also helps us out with knowing who has license and who doesn't. And so, they also play a part in that as well. The license purchasing is still done at the city clerk's office.
Okay. Now, do you require them to be licensed before you release the animals? Or how's that followed up on?
If they don't have a license, or they don't have their tags, Animal Control then steps in and does their portion of that job. I don't know if we can legally, technically hold the animal if they don't have a license or not. That's why we have the court system, so then they have to answer to the court on why their animal's not licensed.
Other questions, concerns?
Couldn't we have the licenses go there, too?
Commissioner Clark, I'm sorry.
I'm just thinking, you know, I have to go into the city clerk's office, and my animals are all old, so they're kind of on their last license. But why couldn't a license be issued from the animal shelter also?
That's what I had, actually. Plus license. Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. If that's possible, because otherwise, that's the way we can keep track of the owners, and how to notify the owners of the animals by that licensing. And maybe that could be part of the adoption process. I think if you have a three-year rabies shot, it was five dollars or something like that for three years. So, we're not talking about an awful lot of money. But animals are next to children, and they're loved ones in one's family. And how do we keep track of them? And maybe by licensing them when they are adopted, so then the people will know that this is the process.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you know, this is a whole new operation for the city. And I think I want to commend staff, Sabrina, Lieutenant Baker, and Chief of Police Department. This is a whole new operation that we don't have any experience on. And so, we're learning as we go, and we're adjusting. But as they stated, some of the things where it's volunteers, whether it's the operational side of it, the details, I think now with one of the, excuse me, the accounts receivable position, we're going to be able to coordinate better with the, in this case, with the animal shelter. And if we need to make adjustments, find a system so that we can better track at the shelter, we'll do that. But, you know, please realize that this is a whole new operation that we're trying to figure out. You know, it's, preferably, it would have been nice to have continued to the, you know, having this service upgraded somewhere else. But we have it now, and they are rising to the challenge. But those are, you know, good questions and suggestions that I think as we implement our accounts receivable position, those are things that maybe we can coordinate better.
Yeah.
And have a better idea. So, hopefully, I'm hoping by next year, we'll definitely have a better operations out there, and some of our staff will be there.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would recommend, if the Commissioners feel comfortable with the proposed fee schedule, with the exception of the boarding fee, to be stricken, and the rest of it adopted.
As we check our son's suggests, we'll make the motion. Thank you, sir. I will stand for a motion.
Mayor, one more question. How do you feel about the boarding fee issue? I mean, it sounds like that's part of just a very kind gesture that you're making as, you know, people who work for the city to the public.
We just kind of talked about it, and I was kind of skeptical on it as well. But when Sabrina explained to me, you know, some people charge higher prices, and people won't be able to afford the boarding fee portion of it. So, that we just kind of offered the service. It's nothing that has to be done there. We were just kind of trying to be thoughtful and helpful with the community.
Kind of where I was thinking that was coming from, wasn't the competition.
Good morning. I just wanted to concur with the mayor. We have some space issue. I think we're kind of tied up with space, so I totally agree. It is, could be perceived as a competitive edge towards some of the people that do the boarding. So, I definitely concur with that, not to mention, we don't have the space to be doing any boarding. So, we will definitely scratch that idea for this, at this point in time.
Thank you.
I just, I guess I just want to thank you for the perception of wanting to be helpful. Even if we do strike it, it's a very thoughtful way of looking at the animal idea.
Yeah, and I agree. I just didn't want that perception, you know, because obviously, we're not in the profit-making business, so we can perform services less expensive than someone who's in the business world. I just didn't want that to be perceived, that we're taking revenue away from a business. I didn't think that was our role as such. But thank you for all your efforts and work. I will stand for a motion, then, please.
I'll make that motion that we accept the fee schedule as presented by Ms. Day and Lieutenant Baker, and the chief, with the exception of the boarding fee.
And Commissioner Clark, did you just mention what the resolution number is? It's number three under F.
Yes, I can read that. I have my glasses today.
Okay.
That is Resolution Number Thirty-Four, Two Thousand Seventeen, Two Thousand Eighteen, setting the fees for the animal shelter as presented by Ms. Day and Lieutenant Baker.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Clark. Need a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bucker. Need further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clark, can we have roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Bucker?
Yes.
Parried unanimously. It is now two minutes to eleven, and I apologize. I didn't think public comment was going to take so long. We will literally take a break for about no more than five minutes, Jay.
Ten.
Five minutes. We'll ask you to wait outside. We appreciate it. As soon as that's over, we will come right back in the session, and we will continue the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the meantime, can I have--
You move, go into executive session under J. One, sale or disposition of real property, six thirteen gold, and all future sales pursuant to ten fifteen one H eight.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bucker. I have a roll call, please, Madam Clark.
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Yes.
Parried unanimously. We will wait to the poll. I will entertain a stipulation race.
Mr. Mayor, I stipulate that we were in executive session in only matters pertaining to J. One, sale or disposition of real property, at six thirteen gold, and all future sales pursuant to ten fifteen one H eight was discussed, and no action was taken.
All right. Being now in open session, is there any motion that anyone would like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to move forward with the process of the sale or disposition of real property at six thirteen gold, and all future sales pursuant to ten fifteen one H eight.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Clark. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right. We're going to take a two-minute break, and we'll be right back in session.
It's called a piney.
We have a question that we need to answer.
No.
Okay, all right, okay. Nice to pick up. I need to check the ground up ten minutes. We have you. Okay, thanks.
All right.
Okay.
Make the power.
You can turn the radio off.
The chief of--
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 So, this garage thing after the--
Are we ready, guys? Everyone ready? We are back in session, and I thank you so much for your indulgence and understanding. We are now number G, unfinished business discussion. This is just an update of the Mud Mountain Recreational Park. Our presenter is Mark Left, the airport manager.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor, Commissioners, Renee, Juan. Yeah, just to give you an update where we're at on that. The electricity is installed, so the meter's in place. So, poles are put in, new lines were put in. Meter was put in just this morning. So, we are energized up at the track now. So, we have power. The track's about ninety percent complete. It's rutted in as far as the course itself. And that's going to be finished up in the next day with the barricades and fencing and different things like that. We're in the process of finishing soil stabilization. So, there's some areas that were really sandy. So, those are all being stabilized right now with top, top fill type dirt materials, and then being packed down and wet. So, that's happening this morning. So, we're pretty much complete with that as well. The agreements are in place between Off-Road Desert Racing and the landowners, Randy Ashbaugh and Bob Ingram. So, they've come to an agreement on the land use. Policy is in place for five million dollars liability for the weekend. ODR has that in place. Met with the police department, so they're aware of the activities, and will be posted at one of our checkpoints that's near the entrance, as, in case anything happens there at the track. But if there is an emergency within the city, they would leave that post and take care of those issues as a priority. So, it's ready to go. So, the event itself will be Saturday. You might have seen some things to talk about Friday as well as Saturday. Friday's the tech inspection that's over at the VFW, where they'll be inspecting the vehicles prior to the race. Race day itself is Saturday, this Saturday. It'll be from seven AM until they finish, so before dark, most likely. And they'll have awards afterwards and whatnot at the facility. And then they'll do cleanup on Sunday. I'd like to thank a lot of folks that have helped out with this project. Police Department have been very helpful, working with me, making sure this all gets safely covered. Bo at the electric department and his team has been very helpful, getting this all in place. Don from his department, we wouldn't have the great roads that we have going into the facility, and the track cleared out. Solid Waste Department, the old grandstand, got taken out, cut into pieces, and now is being recycled by Andy and his team. Zoning Department, Suzanne and Robbie, helped me out on the front end of this project, make sure we could even move forward with this. Melissa had finance to get the funding together for us to get the electric put in. And then the volunteers that have been part of this process, especially companies like Bar Two, that a lot of the time and equipment to make this track ninety percent complete has been on Bar Two's dime, and they've been doing that. So, we'd like to thank our community. I'd like to thank Juan for allowing this project to get out of the gates in the first place, and having a vision of this city asset that's been here in part of the city for many, many years, that has been sitting dormant and idle, that is now a viable event space for the community. There's a picture of the track course itself, so you can see where it crosses over Copra between--
You want to use the--
Yeah.
Blazer?
All right, there's where it crosses over. So, we'll have, well, this doesn't show all what we have here, but what we have is the blockades right in here. So, we'll have Gun Club blocked off. And then we'll have signage on Cemetery Road advising that there's a road closure ahead. We've worked with the local Copra community on how they would like to see road closures done. So, we have a document that's in place. Have a copy of it here, if you'd like to see it, of where the road closures and signage will be. Don's team will be dropping those off on Thursday, the barricades. The volunteers from Off-Road Desert Racing will be setting it up Saturday morning, and they'll be manning those locations to make sure people aren't going through them that aren't supposed to be going through them. And then we'll move them off to the side, and Don's department will pick them up Tuesday after the holiday. So, any questions?
Well, you're crossing the road, so it's not going to be a loop, per se. You're actually going to cross the road again. It looks like you're going on the east side and coming back, and then crossing at the same location again. So, you only have actually one location to cross?
One area. It's actually two paths, but confined into one area. So, we'll have a road closure to the north of that on Copra, and then to the south of that. So, those will be hard closures. So, there won't be any traffic going through that area. So, people that are going to the vent will have to come through Cemetery Road. There is no other way to get there.
How many participants, Mark, do you expect?
Right now, they have about fifty teams signed up as of now. Team size varies between ten and twenty people. At the VFW, Friday night is when they'll be doing their technical inspections, so they'll be checking the equipment over there. So, this is an area that's, or an event that's inclusive of our neighboring communities in our county.
If a team is between ten and twenty people, how many vehicles per team?
That's one vehicle.
Okay.
So, the public, if they want to go to watch this event, where would they park?
You see the green areas there? That's actually parking. So, on Ingram's land, on the east side of Copra, that's being leveled out, and will be parking available there, which is directly across from the entrance, and then the area that we already have up on the top side. So, the event itself will only be, the track course is only going through the dome, or the bowl area. So, all the acreage that we have to this, north of that, is available for parking. And they'll have ATV side-by-sides, like six-passenger ones, that'll be running shuttles from that lower parking lot up to the top. It's free. There is no charge to the public.
And you say it starts at seven o'clock in the morning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we did that. They wanted to start earlier, but we want to, uh, stay in accordance with nuisance noise type issues. Which has us, uh, quiet hours basically ten to seven.
Mark, would you kind of explain the type of race it is? I know some people have in their mind the past, well, think we used to race around in circles and do those things, but this is totally different.
Uh, this is different. This is, would be considered a short course for, for these type of racers. They're used to longer courses like a Baja type course and whatnot, same type of vehicles. So they're going to do heats where they'll be doing laps on this course that you see outlined in red. Uh, so when it comes out of the R area in the bottom of the bowl area, it goes to the west out onto Randy Ashbaugh's land. And then will come to the north. You can see it where that forty-five hundred number in elevation is. So that goes to Ingram's land, then up to Randy's land, and then back down into Ingram's land, back into ours. And then across the road into Ingram's land and then back again. And I believe they're doing ten laps. So each vehicle will do this ten times and record their time. And then it's, that's how they're awarded, um, best time.
So you just start one vehicle at a time?
One vehicle at a time, but you'll see probably every minute a vehicle will roll out. Uh, because they can get enough spacing in a minute's time.
Got it.
But they'll be at different parts of the track.
And along the, the track itself, Juan, are there, uh, people stationed, uh, in the event of an incident that might happen? I mean, because some of this stuff is obviously out of sight.
Uh, yes, that's actually how they operate when they came here the last time presented, they talked about that. So they have EMS stationed throughout the course. Also, there's some hill areas that are fairly tricky, so they have, uh, vehicles equipped with winches in case they need to pull people up. Uh, so they, they're used to running these type of events. Uh, they have drones that also stream live footage, so there's drones that are tracking these vehicles. Um, so if somebody, uh, goes into an arroyo that can't be physically seen by some of the staff that's around, uh, the drones will pick those people up and see, see that they've, uh, gone off. But yes, they've, they've done these races often, this is not their first. So safety is important to them.
All right, other questions, concerns? Let's hope for good weather and a safe race.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next item is H1, uh, under New Business Discussion Action IFB seventeen slash eighteen slash oh oh three. Cielo Vista subdivision, medium voltage distribution renovation, rebid award recommendation. Who, by Pat Wood, our CPO.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Mr. Fuentes. Um, I'd like to, you know, both, of course, with our electric department. And this is Matt Thompson with Bohannon Houston. He's our engineer on this, they're the, our engineers on this project. We're here to discuss, take action on IFB seventeen dash eighteen zero three Cielo Vista subdivision, medium voltage distribution renovation rebid. Bids were open on Thursday, May thir- May third at two PM. We received five bids for this project. Uh, recommendation is being made by Bohannon Houston to award the bid to Bixby Electric in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars excluding New Mexico GRT. We stand for any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Excluding GRT.
Excluding GRT.
So they're not going to be paying GRT at all?
Yes.
They will?
No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's three thirty, three thirty-nine thousand.
The three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, forty plus.
Yeah. But their bid was.
They excluded the.
It was a base.
Okay, all right. No, yes, no. I just wanted money in this.
Any other concerns, questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for, uh, awarding of the rebid.
Just for your information, Mayor, Commissioners, this project, uh, we did put in the preliminary budget. So it is being funded in-house through local funds on the electrical. And this is the first time, I believe, we, we, um, have you all, I think we believe it might be the first time we work with Bohannon, Bohannon and Houston on an electrical project.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, um, IFB seventeen eighteen zero zero three Cielo Vista subdivision, medium voltage distribution renovation, rebid award, uh, recommendation, um, with the recommendation by Bohannon Houston of Bixby Electric, Inc. out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four eighty-three, plus GRT.
Thank you. I have a clarifying motion. Uh, I need a second. Uh, I have a second by Commissioner Heschler. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, number two, H2, discussion action Rogers Tax Funding Allocations. Oh, I beg your pardon.
Number four is number two.
Now, now we do number four. Sorry, thank you for that catch, I appreciate it. Uh, discussion action, consideration to propose an ordinance to authorize the operation of recreational off-highway vehicles on maintained streets owned by the city. Commissioner Baca.
Yes, um, I don't have a big speech planned out, but I do believe that we should consider that in the order. County and Elephant Butte has passed it. The thing I think I believe it would bring in some revenue for this. I mean, I just think it's a great idea. We have a lot of people that are wanting it and including myself. You know, I just think it's a good idea.
Get close to them.
Oh, I just believe, I just believe it's a great idea.
Okay.
We'd all consider doing this.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for taking the initiative to bring this to the commission's attention. Obviously, that's something you have a passion about and we'd like to have commissioners get involved in things that they, they feel comfortable with and, and really have that fire in their belly about. So thank you, Commissioner Baca, for that. Uh, questions, comments, Commissioner Clark?
Um, I had a couple of phone calls from some people that, um, expressed some concerns. And I have a couple myself. Um, and one of the examples that was given to me was, um, um, I'm very familiar with the town in Utah called Moab. And Moab is right next to Arches National, uh, Por- uh, Park. And they have the, uh, ordinance that allows the off-road vehicles to drive on. And Farmington apparently jumped and did exactly what Moab had done. And then in retrospect, had to go back and keep changing the ordinance because it wasn't really working for their community. So the concern I have is it took a long time for us to even say yes to golf carts. Do you remember that process? It was a while. It was a while. And before we jump into something like this, it's, you know, we've got one place where these off-road vehicles are going and that wants to have no more of them on their property. They have other people to have them, would like access, it would be nice not to have to trailer them. But we haven't really experimented with it yet to see what's the noise like. These, these are noisy vehicles and it's like, you know, do I want that kind of sound running past me? It would be like having the Harley Davidsons running past my house all the time or something. Um, I don't know what kind of an impact that's going to have on residents. Um, we did hear from, um, some people on Copra that were concerned about, you know, the noise and the, the dust and all that kind of stuff. So I wouldn't dismiss this entirely, but it might be that we want to take a look at some other communities that have put this into place and talk to them and find out what's been the positive, what's been the negative. Maybe we need to just streamline the streets that we would allow the off-road vehicles to actually go on. Maybe just a few of the thorough paths that would go to where they would actually be using these, like maybe, um, you know, where we're doing this still this weekend. So there's a lot of, I think, variables that, at least for me, right at the moment, um, I'm not entirely confident, but I don't want to say no to this because there could be a, a really good compromise on it. Um, I also, you know, would like to have some input from the police department. Um, you know, how would you, they feel about having, you know, these kind of vehicles with the age of people driving them on the roads? What can you do? Can you pull them over if they're speeding? I mean, you know, there's a lot of that thought that I think needs to go into this too. But, uh, Chief, if you mind.
I had been talking to Lauren Hall from Park West, he's one of the big proponents. If everybody did what he did to his off-road vehicle, would you?
Chief, can you use the mic, please?
Sure. He spent, uh, a lot of money setting this up. He put the, uh, tires that are safe for highway use. He put, uh, mufflers on it so it's not a, a loud vehicle like typical off-road vehicles are. He has a windshield, he has insurance. I mean, even has it, if the state would allow it, and then apparently they don't to get it licensed, other than off. They have the off-highway license now, they don't have a regular license. Uh, I had discussions with Lieutenant Baker from the sheriff's office about this issue. They have the ordinance in Elephant Butte and it has all the guidelines. They have to have eye protection, they have to have certain types of tires, they have to have the exhaust muffled. They have a long checklist and I think if we mirrored what Elephant Butte has, it wouldn't be a bad idea. See, I had some concerns from a public safety issue. And then so I started looking into it and talking to some people. And it's just like, we have people that drive regular cars, motorcycles that are street legal. We've got people that abide by the law, we have people that don't. The ones that don't end up there in court. So it would be under the same, under the same circumstances. It's the mode of transportation. And I think it's going to grow a new life with the fact that the price of gas is going to shoot to four dollars a gallon again, I believe. It's not coming down, it's going up. So that was the big, uh, push when they got the approval on the golf carts is because of the price of gas, they couldn't afford to drive their vehicles. So I think if, if you looked into the Elephant Butte city ordinance, I've been told that that covers all the bases that, that from a law enforcement standpoint, it covers all the bases.
So that's a thought. And I did get a phone call from somebody in Elephant Butte that recommended that we don't do it.
Sure.
And so that's another thing too, we're more of a city instead of a straight line like Elephant Butte is. I'm just thinking that it would be good to do a little bit more research. Read the ordinance in Elephant Butte, read the ordinances in some other little towns, talk to Farmington, find out why they had to keep redoing their ordinances. What some of the other cities have had trouble with before we just jump ahead. One of the things I was thinking too, Commissioner Baca, is just as an experiment, we could let, you know, for one day maybe, just to see what kind of traffic people would have if they were allowed to take their off-road vehicles up to this deal on Saturday, for example. What's going to happen? How would that look? Um, you know, that could be our experiment. I am really concerned, Chief, that a lot of these vehicles are, are, in my estimation, are really not street safe.
Exactly, but that, like I said, Elephant Butte adopted the ordinance that in order to, in fact, if we have to be part of an inspection, that's not a problem. To make sure that they have the price, you know, don't have loud mufflers. Uh, the off-road highway tires do not work on pavement. Uh, they have to have the eye protection. We, I think Elephant Butte actually requires them to have a helmet. So just a lot of things to look at, you are correct there, but, uh, it's worked in other, other cities and, but maybe we need to do more research.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind that, Commissioner Baca, myself, um, to not kill the concept, but to do a little more research work and find out what the PD was going to want for anything that would be.
My, my two cents is that Commissioner Baca do a presentation after he does his research.
How about that?
That's not kicking the can down the road, it's kicking the open.
He's my neighbor.
Is that a hype joke?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see, um, I think this is a great idea. Um, you know, there's a lot of people in town that are, are, are adaptable to this procedure and process. And I think that everyone can kind of use their common sense as to what an off-road vehicle means, uh, driving our streets safely, uh, following the ordinances. If someone has a sign posted out there, please do not pass through or enter, uh, respect that. Um, I think that we need to follow up with this rather quickly, not just sit on it and let it pass. You know, keep it fresh in everybody's mind. And then if we need to do a, a trial run, as, as Commissioner Clark mentioned, let us do that and let us see what's going to happen. I mean, we don't know until we try. And we could always pull back if it's not going to work.
Other concerns?
Mayor, if I may, uh, I feel like it's important for us to join our other communities that are, who have this ordinance. Uh, I'm a little bit, uh, I'm in support of the idea, but I want to make sure that we move carefully. Um, you know, for instance, it's, it is going to change, um, the traffic within this community.
Most definitely.
And, uh, I think we need to do some things to anticipate that. For instance, uh, we have to establish some of, uh, maybe a, a, some signs to indicate where people can travel and where they can't. Uh, if we're going to get trouble, if we're going to get, uh, vehicles coming down from Elephant Butte, for instance, on one eighty-one, a lot of the people are going to go to, uh, to Walmart. We can't go on a state road.
Exactly.
How do we transgress that? Should there be a signage issue?
Exactly. Elephant Butte did something with, uh, the portion of one ninety-five that runs through the municipality of Elephant Butte. I think from, uh, somewhere around the, the Elephant Butte Inn to the VFW somewhere along in there. They can't go on Rock Canyon Road, they can't go on Orange Springs Boulevard, and they can only go that area between Elephant Butte Inn and the VFW on one ninety-five. They did something about adopting the, the highway, I don't know how they did that.
Right. And I think we need to look at things like that to establish the, the traffic flows. I think we need to figure out a point, uh, where there's the police department, whatever, where these vehicles are inspected and authorized to be on the road prior to them actually getting on the road. In other words, you don't go by an ATV and then run, run.
No, no.
It's got to be a process. So I think we're at the preliminary stages in my view. And I think we need to, you know, follow it on through. I, I, in my mind, it's not to not allow it, the process, but to allow the process, but guide it. And, uh, and so I think we need to move it that way, in my opinion, anyway.
I think, Chief, on Elephant Butte, and I could be wrong on this, but I thought Elephant Butte took over a portion of one ninety-five.
They, they did.
So they own that road and that's why they can go on the state highway on it.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know how they did that, but not to mention, that's a state highway. Date, Broadway is a interstate loop, so I don't know how that, that would work out.
And, uh, I know in our golf cart ordinance, um, uh, that we allow the golf carts to cross state main Broadway and South Broadway. They can travel on it, you know.
And, and it would have to be the same way, they would have to use some backroad copro, whatever, to get up to the Walmart area.
I mean, I, I think it's a great idea personally. Uh, I just want to make sure that we do it right. Uh, we do it for the protection of the vehicle owners and for the citizens. You know, we are an older community and I don't know, uh, even with proper muffles, mufflers, how quiet these machines are. I don't, I don't know. But I think we could put in things that would require them to meet our standards. Make sure that they meet our standards, then fine. If not, no. So would anyone like, is there any further discussion? Anyone like to make a motion to, uh, explore this a little bit further, to reach out to Farmington? To find out what their concerns were? To get a copy of the ordinance, I guess it is, from Elephant Butte? To see what their requirements were for the vehicle owners? And then do some research and be ready to make a presentation at that person's or owner's convenience?
I do have a copy of the ordinance already from Elephant Butte, but yes.
Could you make copies of that and have the commission manager Fuentes?
Sure.
And, uh, commission, and attorney Rubin also get that. Now, I guess, Chief, do you have that copy?
I don't, but I.
And give it to the chief.
So, Mayor, I'd like to see, um, our city manager and maybe Commissioner Baca, maybe the chief or, and, I would be glad to join, but get a small group together and, and kind of develop a presentation, do our research and then come back to this commission and make that presentation so that we all can understand what's going on, so we can be on the same page. I think it'd be premature to, to pass an ordinance right now without having all those, those Ts crossed, those Is dotted, but I think we're. Ts crossed and those Is dotted, but I think we're moving in that, that positive direction.
Also, I know we heard a lot from, excuse me, from citizens of Elephant Butte, and that's awesome, because they've already done it, they're living the dream. I would like to have, when we're ready to do this presentation, maybe set aside a half an hour or a certain period of time prior to a city commission meeting or during that meeting, so we could hear from the citizens of TRC and what their concerns are, and if they support something like this, or et cetera, I think that should be part of the process as well. It's a long-winded motion, someone's gonna make it, anything to be made.
I have one more question, I'll make a motion. Chief, if you put street tires on an off-road vehicle, can the vehicle still go off-road?
They make, kind of like what a pickup truck has, all rain, exactly.
So if somebody was wanting to go to one of these dirt roads that they can take the off-road vehicle, that it's not gonna be a problem, because they have to street-legalize it.
Yeah, they would, they would be fine, obviously, the factory tires are designed for off-road and climbing hills, I mean, they'll have to give up that part of their hobbies, I guess, unless they want a trailer and go out and do that type of thing, but if they want to use it as a mode of transportation, they'll have to have street legal tires to make it safe.
So we're basically more talking about this is a street vehicle now as opposed to an off-road vehicle?
Sure, sure.
On some level. Okay. I'll make the motion that Mr. Commissioner Baca and whomever else he chooses to help him with the team, that they put some more work together and make a presentation to the commission.
I second that motion.
I have a motion, like Commissioner Clark, a second. If I may approach him, I have further discussions, thoughts, hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. Commissioner Baca, thank you for allowing Commissioner Clark to volunteer your services for this, you are very gracious, very, very gracious. The next item is H2, Discussion Action, Rogers Tax Funding allocations, Manager Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, in your package you have the information for the Rogers Tax for 2018-19, on the screen you have the funds that were allocated last year for fiscal year '18, this year, and what each of these organizations submitted for this new fiscal year '19. We have the eligible organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, Prince of Elephant Butte, Geronimo Springs Museum, Main Street Through the Consequences, New Mexico Off-Road Highway Vehicle Alliance is a first-time applicant, the Sierra Turlers, Sierra Arts Council, TRC Fiesta, and the Veterans Memorial Park Museum. The Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met, and they're making a recommendation and a far-right column of the allocation for the Chamber of Commerce at $10,000, Geronimo Springs Museum at $10,000, Main Street at $14,000, New Mexico Off-Road Highway Alliance at $1,500, Sierra Arts Council at $3,000, TRC Fiesta at $4,000, and the Veterans Memorial Park, they did note that it was a late submission, but they are recommending $2,500 for a total of $45,000. And it is before you, as it has in the past, for consideration and approval of those recommendations.
Thank you, Manager Fuentes.
Manager Fuentes, what we have, are we talking about the co-op grant participants of CO2, or just this?
Just, just this, this category of allocations, the co-op is separate.
And that's not on our agenda today?
No, just, no, it's, well, it's, it's, I mean, that's already-
It's on the machine, but it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, this, the approval for today is for the, the Lodger's Tax co-op. The co-op is already automatically, that's, that we factor in in the budget, we don't vote on that.
Mr. Mayor, I have-
All right, here's-
I have to give our Lodger's Tax Board an awful lot of credit, and I think we have an excellent Lodger's Tax Board.
Agreed.
And if this is their recommendation, I would like to make a motion that we accept their recommendation.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, I would just like to put forth a project that, I'm not, I, I've spoken to the commission about before, at the end of the day, I would like to do what we did last year, award $46,000, I would like to increase the Veterans Memorial Park and Museum by another $1,000 to make it $3,500, and my reason is this, I've been working with Maggie Allen and Tracy Burnett and Manager Fuentes, I think you've heard me talk about this before, is that I've been in contact with Ken Nadal through, Don Armio gave me his name, who is the president of the American Legion Riders Association chapters throughout the state, and once we know when we're gonna get that new wall, I told Mr. Nadal I would give him at least a month to two months' lead time, I would like to see us build an event around that wall. It's important, it's respectful, the American Legion Riders have come into town in the past, and I think it not only is it the right thing to do, I think it's also a part of economic development, and some of them will stay overnight, eat in our restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. So, I agree with everything the Commissioner Clark said, I would just like my fellow commissioners to entertain the idea to increase the Veterans Memorial Park for $1,000, hopefully, I can't guarantee, I put a phone call to Mr. Nadal this morning, he was not in, I will send him an email tomorrow, but hopefully we'll be able to spotlight our community once again in a positive vein by pocketing this new wall.
Mayor, we have in our budget $46,843 for recommended Lodger's Tax recipients. This is 45.
Yeah, we do have an extra $1,800 that we haven't accounted for, so we do have the money there if you want, right?
I would like to-
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner?
Yes.
Can you speak on that additional amount?
Of course.
If you remember in the guidelines that you approved with the recommendations, they requested to keep 20% back in case there are any other events throughout the year, and as they were going through the funding, all they left themselves was $1,800-
Right.
-for other events throughout the year, so that's why there was a little balance.
Well, how about the stipulation, Mayor, then, that if, in fact, we do have somebody who's willing to put that event together, that we would entertain that $1,800 directly for that?
Mr. Mayor, also, just an important note, and I understand that that was in the guidelines, but it's still at the discretion of the commission, if they truly did set aside 20%, it would have been over $9,000. It was not done, so it is at the discretion of the commission that they wish to allocate at least a thousand of that remaining balance to the veterans.
Right. And, and Commissioner Clark, I appreciate what you say, and I don't want to get into a dance right now, it's getting long and late, I would like to say that even if we're not able to pull off this event, this is a, I've always been confused about this, frankly, for the 10 years I've served this community in this capacity, this is a city-owned asset that has two different boards, I've never been able to justify how it all comes together, but I know that if someone has that type of passion, that writes a check for a thousand bucks out of their own pocket because her husband and some other folks here were responsible for starting this effort many, many years ago, I would like to put $1,000, and I am gonna be the one that will be working with Ms. Allen to try to make this happen when the ribbon-cutting for the wall happens, but even if it doesn't happen, and I promise you I will give it my best effort, that I think that we should put that $1,000 back into their allocation.
Mayor Proton, do you have a problem with that?
I don't have a problem with that.
I'll amend my motion.
No, I'm in my second.
Thank you very much, any further discussion?
I would just like to note that a timely process of these applications, I know that we've mentioned that several times before in the past, that we would like these applications submitted in a timely fashion, so that we're all doing the same thing for everyone, just so that you understand that in the future. Thank you, I just, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, thank you for bringing that up, because that's always been a sore spot with me-
Yes.
...as well, and I appreciate that. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously, and thank my fellow commissioners for their support. Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll be very brief, looks like we will be opening the pool this weekend, I think that's what I hear from staff, correct? I see, so, but we are continuing to seek, make sure that we continue it even after the school starts, so that's, that's ongoing. Just a reminder, the downtown shuttle service in partnership with Sierra County, Elephant Butte, and some of the DWI program will start this weekend as well, there will be two stops downtown by Bullock's and by the brewery, also, the, I'll be working with Sierra Vista Hospital staff and some of the members of the finance committee on grants for equipment construction, we did receive the New Mexico co-op grant of $23,000, the local match funds are budgeted in the preliminary budget that was approved, and the, we did also receive the local government road fund letter project for $64,000 for East Eighth Street and also for Long Vida, correct? So, just wanted to kind of give a quick up, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Attorney Rubin, obviously, is in court, Mayor Proton.
I don't have a report, but I do want to ask a follow-up question to Manager Fuentes. I know last year we had authorized staff to move into, or to look at Central Dispatch moving into the fire station. Do we have an update on that and when that will be happening?
Well, they're still working with, with an architect for designs-
Okay.
...of, of the addition, the original proposal that was brought to the commissioners has changed a little bit slightly, they're gonna, it looks like they may require additional space, and once they have finalized that, they will be coming back to the commission as well as the actual lease agreement with the, with the dispatch authority, so they're working on that with the architects.
Okay, thank you, I was just kind of curious, because I noticed that they are now working on the roofing at the county annex building, which, you know, houses the dispatch, and so I was just kind of wondering where we were going with that and what was happening.
That's, that has nothing to do with the relocation of dispatch.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heschel?
Sir?
Commissioner, Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Baca? I have two thank yous, number one, this past weekend, we had the 4H rodeo out at the Punk Ria, a rodeo arena, there were 83 contestants, I was out there on Saturday and man alive, the trucks, the trailers, the animals, it was just wonderful, and I counted how many contestants there were, how many trailers, stock trailers, had living space in them, and how many trail, it was a two-day event, and how many trailers you had to go to a motel or sleep in your truck, and there were more, you had to go to a hotel and sleep in your truck than there were of the other type. So I wanted to thank Nancy and Edie Edwards, and Frances and Donnie Luna for putting on that 4H rodeo, it was just amazing. I spoke to Frances this morning, she was a little bit ill, I believe, over the weekend and on Monday and Tuesday, so I spoke to her at about 8:20 this morning, and I said, I want to mention something about the rodeo, I was out there, I had a blast, I was talking to people, who do I thank? And she told me Nancy and Edie, Frances and Donnie Luna and her husband, and she said, and you know, I want you to thank OJ and Charlie from the Parks and Rec Department, and these were her words, not mine, quote-unquote, they were amazing, and what a wonderful three words to hear about staff. She said when there was an issue that came up, either OJ or Charlie were on it instantly, Sunday when they had a little bit of a blip on the radar screen, Charlie was on it instantly. Boy, I can't, I, you know, my smile, I almost cracked my lips smiley over the phone when Frances went on and on and talking about the willingness, the wantiness of staff to do the best job they could to make this event the great event it was. So, OJ, Charlie, I know you're not listening, I know you're working, but thank you so much, thank you for so much, because what a reflection on the commission, on the manager, and your fellow team members, so thank you again, keep up the great work. Everyone's talked about the square dance, which was another amazing event, the one person who I did not hear thanked, Geronimo Trail Senior Byways made the welcome bags, Manager Fuentes authorized and found some money so he could give them the city pins, which they all got, but actually she just left, Marilyn Pope from the museum gave us 150 free passes, and people took advantage of that, they took advantage of our hot springs, and then on Sunday they danced as Joey Solis, who is the president of this organization that lives in Elephant Butte, they danced under the traffic light west of Third Street, and then they danced at the, at the jail. So I wanted to thank the chief again and his officers who did a great, great job, there must have been 60 people out there, 75 people dancing, and it, you know, it's TRC's finest hour, you look at this month, we had Fiesta, we had the Hot Springs Festival, we had the 4H rodeo, we had the square dance, and now we're gonna have this off-road, can you just imagine if that was our dance card every month, I mean, oh my lord, you know, it would be amazing, so thank you for all those who produce the events, all those who volunteered to make sure the events work well and were received well, and I just don't think it gets any better than that. I will stand for a motion for adjournment.
I so move, I have so seconds.
And we have so seconds, and we are back in the commission June 13th, 2018, which is our next meeting, thank you, one and all, alibi, well, not bad.